Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the city of West Palm Beach. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Alan Steinberg.
Here.
James Carman.
Here.
Christopher Hagan.
Present.
Malika Barlow.
Present.
Christopher Cameron. And Michael Hyman.
Here.
And I'd like to welcome Michael Hyman, our new member to the board today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Hope you enjoy the experience.
I'll let you know.[36.61][36.61](Laughter).
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Pledge.
Excuse me, let's do the pledge allegiance.[44.48][44.48](Applause).
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands law, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
No approval.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, thank you. Do we have a report from the zoning staff?
Good afternoon, board members. Angela Van Penning is on administrative and staff also welcomes Mike Hyman to the board. And also, ZBA case number 3369, applicant has requested a continuance until the May 2nd meeting.
Do we have to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the continuance?
Make a motion to...
Do we need a motion or do we need to read the continuance?
Just the motion.
Yeah. Make a motion to continue zoning board of appeals case number 3369, a request by John Schmidt of Schmidt Nichols on behalf of the South Florida Science Center to the May 2nd, 2019 zoning board of appeals meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's passed. Okay, so this afternoon, we're going to have a presentation by staff on the application in front of us and then the applicant will have a chance to talk and anyone in the gallery will have a chance to speak for or against the applicant and then the board will have executive session. So at this time, anybody that wants to speak, please stand up, raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any expertise? Communications, anybody? Okay. All right. Good afternoon.
Zoning Board of Appeals, case number 3368, a request by Andrew McCown of GIA Consultants on behalf of CHS CAPC JV1 LLC for the approval of the following. A, a variance from the requirements of section 94-220A3 to enable the construction of stories at sidewalk level to exceed 16 feet in height from finished floor to finished ceiling by two feet and B, a variance from the requirements of section 94-220A4 to enable mezzanine loft to not be counted as a story for the stories above the first story to exceed 14 feet in height from finished floor to finished ceiling by four feet and C, a waiver from the requirements of section 94-220D1 to allow exterior finished materials other than stone, brick, stucco, precast concrete, clapboard siding and wood shingles and D, a waiver from the requirements of section 94-220D8 to allow flat roofs to be constructed without a parapet. The approximately 1.31 acre site is located at 2823 Broadway within Commission District Number One, Commissioner Kelly Show.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Heather Danforth, Senior Planner for the Record. I'm here to present to you Arts on Broadway, ZBA case number 3368 with two variances and actually it'll be amended to three waiver requests. Before I get started on my presentation, I would like to just set the stage with Armando Fana from Housing and Community Development as this has been a partnership.
Hi, good afternoon, Armando Fana, Director for Housing and Community Development Programs. And so, we're supporting this project for a couple of reasons. One, the proximity to Northwood Village, we see it as a catalyst for that neighborhood, particularly the north side of, excuse me, the south side of Broadway, to have an economic development catalyst in that neighborhood that could then go to the merchants that are there on Northwood Village and also as an opportunity to provide much-needed workforce housing units that are targeting those that are about 120 percent of the area median income. We have a shortage of those types of units, that middle-income, moderate-income household. There's really not a lot in the city available right now for that household and so this project will provide an opportunity for some mixed-income units that would target that population and we're negotiating with the developer on the city-owned property and potentially providing that a below-market rate value so that they'll be able to make that commitment to us and make the project financially feasible. So recommending that you acknowledge that or understand that we're partnering with them and recommending approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will move forward with the request. The request is for variances and waivers from the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations to construct a 52-unit artist loft apartments and 1,900 square feet of artist workshop and retail along Broadway Avenue. The two variance requests are, the first one to allow two more feet of floor-to-ceiling height at ground level and variance number two is to allow four more feet of overall height of the third story. There has been a change from the staff report. The second part will be turned into a waiver, so we'll discuss that in a second. Waiver number one will be to allow the building finished materials other than stone, brick, wood, stucco, precast concrete or clabbered siding. Waiver number two is to allow flat roof without a parapet and the new waiver is to allow a mezzanine not to count as a story. So let's get started with the location. The location is four blocks north of Northwood Road. It is seven properties being put together and it's west of Broadway Avenue. The site is currently vacant, as you can see on the pictures on the right, looking north and south from Broadway Avenue. There was a building on the site, but the building was demolished last year. Surrounding the subject site is mostly multifamily. There is one single-family unit to the south side and behind the subject property is a church. Just to step back and give you some history of this code. In 1996, this area was master planned and from that, three different codes came from it. The Northwood Mixed-Use District, the Curry Mixed-Use District and the Broadway Mixed-Use District, the one we're talking about today. So when the master plan was originally done, those three districts were created. And in 2003, the Broadway Mixed-Use District was created after N-Mud and C-Mud. So then again, in 2014, the whole area was master planned again. So since then, we have redone the Curry Mixed-Use zoning district and the Northwood Mixed-Use zoning district. The Curry Mixed-Use zoning district regulations do allow mezzanines on the first floor, do allow first floor to go up to 20 feet and do allow architectural treatments modified that are less prescriptive. And then the rewrite of the Northwood Mixed-Use District also allows mezzanines, also allows, is less restrictive on first floor height restrictions and architectural treatments are stricken. So an example of that from N-Mud is on the bottom right-hand of the screen. So now, kind of going back to the history again, with this project, we have expanded the B-Mud zoning district to the west for this project and these regulations still apply, but every waiver or variance that's being requested has been stricken from the changed codes that are still in progress. So with that, I am going to talk about the proposed development. The site plan is here on the left. The gray is all the buildings. There are six buildings, four large ones and two smaller ones in the center. The four large ones house 52 apartment units and then where the dashed areas are on the front, that's closest to Broadway, that'll be commercial space. And then the two smaller buildings, those are around a public plaza that enclose the public plaza and those will also be commercial space. Interior of the larger gray buildings, there will be private plazas for each of the residential units. They are proposing to redo the streetscape, including street trees and sidewalks. They're proposing a public space along Broadway, they're setting the buildings back to have a hardscape area to provide a plaza. And then on 27th and 28th, the units face the street in order to engage the street and all the parking is located in the rear. Here is some pictures of some of the amenities that they're proposing for the project, which include benches, again, pavers along Broadway and then lighting in the central courtyard to provide a public space. With that, there's the proposed architecture. It is, again, 52 units, 1,920 square feet of commercial, three stories plus a mezzanine. The max height is 38 feet and 3 inches. They're proposing balcony and patios and the materials are metal, mesh and glass, what you can see on the right, plus they're putting panels from murals on the building to help with bringing in the artistic feel. And all of that will be curated through our Art in Public Places Department. So with that, we move into the variances. The first variance is to allow two more feet of floor-to-ceiling height at ground level. So the way that this construction type works, these prefabricated recycled steel containers is that they have a prefab size of nine foot tall, eight foot wide by 40 foot in depth. With that, if you stack them on top of each other, you have 18 feet. So with that, if you can see on where it says residential units, you can see the two prefabricated containers stacked on top of each other, but what they have done in both the residential unit side and the commercial side is added facade articulation at 16 feet to be in compliance with the code. And at that point, they also change materials and they add canopies. And so what they're trying to do is meet the intent of creating a pedestrian scale at ground level. For variance number two, it's to allow four more feet of overall height of the third floor. So it's the four more feet on this one because they're asking, because at the third floor, the code is asking it the floor-to-ceiling height to go smaller to 14 feet. So with what they're trying to do here is if you look to the right, the artist loft floor plans and the floor spaces in gray in the graphic, if you come in the front door where the yellow arrow is, you can see that it's all an open space. And then if you walk up to the second story, you can see the loft there so that you have the space below the loft to all be opens, you have this big open space and that's considered what an artist's style would like. So they're providing this open volume workspace, but also when they do stack each of them, their total height is less than what code would allow. So just if you look at the graphic on the left, if you add up the 16 max first floor plus the two 14 max second and third floor, you get a total max height allowed by code is 44 feet. So even with the asking for the variance for the overall height of the third floor, their height of the building is less than what would be allowed by code. They're asking for 38 feet and 3 inches. The first waiver is to allow a building finished material other than stone, brick, wood, stucco, precast concrete or clabbered siding. This project is providing undulating painted corrugated steel, you can see it on the right, large glass window openings, especially along Broadway, large screen printed mesh, you can see an example there, and then white panels to be painted by artists and curated with Art in Public Places. Other than the architectural requirements, this meets architectural orientation and facade requirements, including creating a street wall, creating pedestrian entrances on Broadway and meeting all glazing requirements around the whole building. The second waiver associated with this request is to allow a flat roof without a parapet. This architectural style is part of the artist loft field to go with it and instead of a parapet, they are proposing to provide a metal panel roof with soffit. And also, this property, just to note, the mission revival that this would go with would be complementary next to a historic district, but this is actually on the other side of Broadway, so the context is a little bit different on this side. So there is a zoning map there and a location of where the historic district is and the subject property. And the third waiver is to allow mezzanine not to count it as a story. This is our additional waiver that wasn't in the report, it was built into the second variance. So basically, we talked before about the overall height of the building being less than what code would allow. So these consistencies with not counting a mezzanine is consistent with the building code and with the changes in the other codes that don't count mezzanines. So therefore, the request is to not count a mezzanine as a story. So this project has gone through public notice and review. It was reviewed by the Plans and Plats Review Committee and the applicant has satisfactory addressed staff's comments to be scheduled for zoning board of appeals and proper notice has been put out. We have received no comments to date for the project and the applicant has done community outreach and we have received five letters of support, of which the applicant will give to you and discuss with you. Therefore, staff recommends approval of case number 3368 based on the findings that the petition meets the required standards in section 94-38D6 and 94-273A2. Staff recommends approval of variance number one, section 94-220A3 to allow the floor-to-ceiling height to be 18 feet, a two-foot variance. Approval of variance number two, section 94-22A4 to allow the floor-to-ceiling height of the third floor to be 18 feet, a four-foot variance. And approval of waiver number one, section 94-220D1 to allow alternative building finished materials. Approval of waiver number two, section 94-220D8 to allow a flat roof with no parapet. And finally, approval of waiver number three, section 94-220A4 to allow a mezzanine not to count as a story. That concludes my presentation. I know the applicant is here and they would like to give a short presentation as well. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Any? Should we hear from the applicant first? Or do you have some questions you want to ask of staff?
I have a question for the applicant.
I had a couple of questions for staff. Okay. First of all, just at the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned that the codes had already been changed in the Curry Mixed-Use District and the Northwood Mixed-Use District to eliminate a lot of the items that are the subject of the variances and waivers today. Are we, as a city, undertaking a similar exercise here in the Broadway Mixed-Use District to amend the code? Okay. So ultimately, our code is going to, we expect, would catch up to the other two districts that have already been modified?
Yes.
That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think the other question I had was, and I agree, I think in interpretation, in my interpretation of this, it seemed like, I think your comment was that the requirements were somewhat overly prescriptive and so that was the reason for changing them and some of these did seem like they were unnecessarily prescriptive for an applicant to try to fit within. One of the waivers is related to the elimination of the parapet, which is one reason for having a requirement for a parapet would simply be an architectural reason and I don't know if that's the reason that it's in the code, but a parapet can also serve an important function, which is to screen things like mechanical equipment or other things that may be considered a nuisance or unsightly. And I just want to make sure that by eliminating this or providing this waiver and eliminating the requirement for a parapet, that we weren't going to have unscreened mechanical equipment or something that a parapet would normally serve a function to screen.
They are screening the mechanical equipment on the roof, yes.
Okay. No further questions for staff?
Any other questions? Okay, would any applicant like to give a presentation?
Good afternoon, my name is Andrew McCown with GAI Consultants Community Solutions Group in Orlando, Florida. And though we don't have a formal presentation, we have an amazing team that we brought here today that can speak to any topics related to the site plan or the architecture, the construction, financing, the community involvement, any questions you may have. And I would also like to take this time to not only thank you for the consideration today, but also to thank staff, which has been just wonderful and amazing to work with so far in this process. So with that, if you have any questions related to this, we're happy to answer.
I have one question. I saw in the picture that there was exterior stairwell, stairways to the second floor. How do you get to the third floor?
The third floor is actually accessed from the internal courtyards. Do I press?
Six.
Sorry, what? Okay, here we go. Okay, so if you see, you have the large courtyard in the middle, which is more or less the public courtyard and then in between the buildings, there's a smaller courtyard. Those are actually private courtyards that are access-controlled and those are where the stairwells to the third floor are located. Am I right, Stephen?
You are correct. I can add some reasons to that, too, if you're interested.
State your name.
My name's Stephen Bender, I'm the architect for the project. We wanted to keep the energy on the street and so the first floor and second floor have entrances, doors and stairs with stoops, as you pointed out, and so mainly along 27th and 28th. With the third floor, rather than creating a larger stairwell on the street, we opted to have the buildings share those, actually, I guess it's only over there, between them. Now those stairwells are visible from Broadway and from the parking, so they add scale, oh, there we go. They add scale to the project in the elevation, so you can see one is here and then the other is back here. And so these buildings share that. So in that courtyard, you know, you have the back windows of the lower units and then a catwalk above that for the upper units. Creates a variety of entrances. You could think of it as like neighborhoods within neighborhoods in the building as well. So that was part of the reason we did that.
Any other questions? Anyone else would like to speak for the applicant?
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Craig Vanderland. I'm the Executive Director of Crisis Housing Solutions and I want to thank you for your consideration and as others have said, I want to thank staff for their belief and hard work in this project as well. Most important, what I wanted to share with you is the amazing team that we've put together. And what I'll do is I'll start out with one of our partners, which is Community Asset Preservation Corporation, a division of New Jersey Community Capital. We have them here and they have tremendous experience in multifamily development in the Northeast and more importantly, community revitalization. At Crisis Housing Solutions, we're about building healthy communities where people can live, work and prosper. Both our agencies have that same vision and then we have a wonderful architect here and also GAI Consultants, also very experienced in their areas and Stephen especially with the construction of container housing, he has a tremendous amount of experience with that. We also have some of our other community partners in PNC Bank. PNC Bank believes in this and they're in the process of putting together a financing package for this. And then last but definitely not least is members of the community and we have some business owners in the Northwood Village area. We've had numerous meetings with business owners in the community and some of the neighborhood associations and I have, would you mind? Okay, great, thank you. We have, we've received five letters of support from some business owners in the community and a couple of nonprofits. One of the things that we're big into is collaboration, community collaboration, because we believe by bringing the community together, that's when some really amazing things can happen. We recognize that there is a need for workforce housing in the community. We also recognize the need that there's a need to support the local artist. And so the Northwood Village just has, in my opinion, just tremendous opportunities and we would just like to be part of that. So I just want to thank you for your time and see if you have any questions. Thank you so much.
Would anybody else like to speak in favor of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Allison Justice, I'm the Deputy Director of the West Palm Beach CRA. I just wanted to let the board know that this is a project that's supported by staff at the CRA. We have met with the applicant and with the HCD staff on this, so we are supportive of this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone want to speak against the applicant? I didn't think so. This time, we'll go into executive session. Does the board have any further comments?
My only comment is, I don't think we've ever had a project come through with this many people on the presenter's side. Like overwhelming to say, this is what you're going to do, but it's different.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, it's very innovative for the city and I really like the project and think we need more of this sort of thing, so.
I was just going to add, I think when you look at the, first of all, the fact that we've already, we as a city have already modified the code language in those other two nearby districts and yet, you know, it's just a matter of, I think, the language and the code here catching up with that and becoming less prescriptive and allowing this and yeah, the innovative side of this is that what they're proposing is a type of modular construction that I think simply wasn't contemplated at the time of the adoption of the code and given the dimensions of those modules that are being used for the construction, it simply just doesn't fit. But there's not a way because by definition, it's modular construction. You're dealing with these fixed dimensions that, you know, I think, again, I support our code becoming a little less prescriptive so that more innovation can occur and that, you know, we move forward with something like this. It's innovative that allows us to, you know, be more creative than what the code initially, you know, ever contemplated.
Anyone else want to comment?
Yes.
If I might, thank you. You know, this being my first meeting, this is the first application I came across and I was concerned because I'm not up to speed on where the city's come to, but in reviewing everything, I had the same concern that the code didn't align with what needed to happen, which apparently has happened, as we heard here today with catching up. I will say that I saw this project, I was extremely excited about it, just from the creativity and what I know, you know, might be some concerns on the different visual that people have in the community, but my comfort comes from having been in a single-family home that was container-done and I think was moved to a museum up in Vermont. And I was, it was awesome. It was just, and I see this as a multifamily and kind of scenario. The city, I hope, will embrace this and it seems that the neighborhood is on board, which was a concern that I had, but, and I don't have a vote, so it doesn't matter here today, but I'm very excited to be here and to be a part of this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to make a motion?
I move that, first motion on the three waivers that were presented, I move that the zoning board of appeals grant the three waivers for zoning board of appeals case number 3368 as presented in the staff report dated April 4th, 2019. This motion is based on the determination of the testimony presented at this hearing along with the application submitted constituted a preponderance of competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that the waiver requested, the waivers requested satisfy all of the criterias of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations, Article II, Section 94-36 and Article IX, Section 94- regulations, Article II, Section 94 dash 36, and Article IX, Section 94 dash 273A2.
Second.
Ms. Chair, would the maker amend the motion to request approval as presented at this meeting as opposed to in the staff report?
Correct. Yeah, that's, I saw staff report, but dated today, so I was assuming that, but yes, in the staff's presentation of April 4th, 2019, as opposed to the staff report. Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion's passed.
Okay.
Keep going.
Yeah. Excellent. So now, a motion on the variances, uh, the two variances that were requested. I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant application number 3368, request by Andrew McCown for a variance, for two variances from section 94, 220, um, I'm sorry, for a variance from section 94 dash 220A3 of the land development regulations to enable the construction of stories at sidewalk level to exceed 16 feet in height from finished floor to finished ceiling by two feet, and a variance from section 94 dash 220A4 of the land development regulations to enable the construction of stories above the first story to exceed 14 feet in height from the finished floor to the finished ceiling by four feet. This motion is based on the testimony presented, along with the application submitted, and the staff presentation today, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criterion, Article II, Section 94 dash 38D6 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion's passed. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there any, any new business?
No.
No.
Then I guess we're adjourned.